Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30 PM, so I will call the Tuesday, August 19th meeting of the Superior Common Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I want to pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Counselor Ladine.
Here.
Counselor Anderson.
Here.
Vice President Moffett.
Here.
Counselor Sweeney.
Here.
Counselor Fennessy.
Here.
Counselor Elm.
Here.
Counselor Ludwig.
Here.
Vice President Herrick.
Here.
Counselor Johnson is excused, and President Grasky.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Item 4.1 is the approval of the August 5th regular council meeting minutes.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, the second by Counselor Elm. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
4.2 is the approval of the August 5th, 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion by Counselor Herrick, second by Counselor Grasky. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
And item 6.1 is a report from Mayor Payne.
Okay, Counselors, I'm rapid-fire checking this. So first, I want to, this is my first chance to really report back on the museums. I hope you've had a chance to visit one of the museums, but it's just a couple weeks since the city has taken over operations, and I've only gotten to check in here and there, but from what I can tell, it's just really going very well. Haven't detected any major hiccups yet, and I've gotten to know our museum's manager, Jordan Stitch, quite a bit better, and she's really just doing an outstanding job, and has already brought a number of new innovations. So if you see her advertising things, I'd encourage you to go or just take a tour of one of those museums and ask to meet with her and have a conversation. I think that's going very well. A large part of that is, there were things to smooth over between the city and Superior Public Museums. There were plenty of questions, as I said, that were left unanswered as we went into that transition, but our Parks and Rec Director, Bridgette, I think has just done a really great job representing the city's interests, but also showing a great deal of respect to Superior Public Museums, and I hope, building a strong relationship. That's what that looks like to me from the outside. But I'd encourage you to meet with them and going to the museums before summer's over. Second, the budget is, you know, in full construction right now. I look forward to seeing your priorities. I have not looked at what's come in yet, and I won't until it's complete. We're in the sort of slash-and-burn phase, is always the most stressful part, but we're getting through it. One thing that I wanted to note, though, there was just a Human Resource Committee meeting last night, and I know the Chair will eventually report on this, but I wanted to tell you now, one of the things we talked about is, we will slightly change the process by which we set the wages. So as I'm sure you know, this is the wages for non-represented employees, so everybody basically outside of police and fire, and historically, I have proposed a number for the wage increase in the budget, but the council actually has to authorize it. So it just puts us in a backwards position where, on the one hand, you're technically in charge, but on the other, you only have the money that passed in the budget. The Human Resource Committee's been talking about this for a very long time, how to change that process, and what we tentatively settled on is that we're going to discuss wages at the September meeting. It's one of the last things I do in the budget at budget process in September before I present it to you. So we're going to have a public discussion on this and try and adopt those wages. I'll be there. I will show you what I'm looking at in the budget, what I think we're able to afford. You'll have tons of information, but they're going to discuss that and make a recommendation. So if that's something you've cared about in the past, I'd encourage you to attend that next meeting of the Human Resource Committee in September. And then finally, just a reminder, we are, this is the busiest and hardest season for road construction, and that's been on my mind lately, is it's starting to get stressful in the neighborhoods. A lot of streets have been under construction for a long time, especially those milled streets. Again, please avail yourself of the Public Works Director so that you can talk directly to your constituents. Happy to do it, but I can definitely use the help, make sure you understand the projects that are in your districts, which is going to be pretty much all of you. So, but from what I can tell, they're all on time, they're all on track, everything's looking good. Just going to be a broken-up, frustrating August and September and October. And that is my report.
All right. Item 7.2 is the business of the Public Works Committee with a meeting held on August 7th. Is there a report from the Chair?
Yes, thank you. I was filling in as Chair for that meeting. We had a comprehensive meeting and covered a lot of things. We talked about the contract with Raph Tillis, the proposed contract for consulting services and evaluating the potential acquisition of utilities operated by Superior Water, Light &amp; Power. We talked about our recommending approval of a contract award to Havlin Concrete Masonry Design for bus stop shelter improvement, and that's in partnership with the DTA, receiving some federal grant dollars. We are recommending approval of the purchase of two solar beam mixers for the water treatment facility. Those will be out in the water next to the facility. They help mix the water so that the whole process works more smoothly. We've had two solar beam mixers already in operation. We found over the life cycle of those that they drastically improve the quality of the process, and actually, we, the staff believes that there'll be a significant financial savings by purchasing two more, and because those are solar-operated, they'll actually cut down our electricity that we use for the pumps related to that process, and so it should be a significant cost savings. We are recommending approval of the purchase of John Deere cab utility tractor, and that's to kind of get some of that ditch side of the road kind of clearance done and sort of that work. We are recommending approval of the purchase of one 2024 Silverado EV crew cab work truck. There are some vehicles that are available at a pretty steep discount, and as vehicles in the fleet are at end of their usable work period for that assignment, we're looking to replace those now when we can do it at a discounted price. And we're discussed in our recommending approval of the purchase of work chassis truck and dump box crane and plow to go along with that, and also recommending approval of installing pedestrian crosswalks near Hayes B and Hayes E Court Cross Hill Avenue. We had a pretty extensive conversation about how those neighborhoods are difficult to move back and forth pedestrian-wise, because the streets don't necessarily line up ideally, because that's where the street grid kind of changes from east of the town to the rest of the town. And so we looked at providing stops. E is approximately halfway and connects with the residential uses on the west side, so that people on the east side will be able to cross over and access the Ballfields and the Bellknap Plaza if they need to do shopping and things like that. And then also, reversely, the people who are in the Hayes Court area can cross over and get into Central Park to enjoy those amenities. And then we also thought that having just the one stop essentially midway between Bellknap and 21st is a pretty big gap, so we wanted to also add one at Hayes B Court. There's some sidewalk infrastructure there already on the west side, and we thought that this would be a good place to connect and also provide people another safe crossing opportunity to make those connections. So those are the recommended items for this evening.
Is that a motion to approve them all?
A motion to approve them all.
Second.
Motion by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Ladine to approve all seven items recommendations of the Public Works Committee. Discussion. Counselor Sweeney?
7.21, which is the approval of the contract, I would like to make a motion. I'll give you my reasons to hold that in this body for one month. I was not here at the last meeting, so I don't really have a lot of strength, because I couldn't be here. I would have been, I could have. So some of the reasons that I'm wanting to hold it in this committee, and I'll just read them off to you. First of all, I assume it fits our mission statement. I don't know. I just haven't read it, but I suppose we can make a lot of things fit into our mission statement, but that's number one. What we buy today seriously affects what we do tomorrow, the amount of money. It's 100, I realize it's 100 and some thousand now. That's not the end of the world, but what we're guided by, and my bigger questions are, are we asking this firm, have we asked them questions and do we expect answers? Have we submitted questions to them that we want them specifically answered that deals with the city of Superior? I realize genetically they would answer, that they have a boilerplate system that they form, but some of the questions that I would think that we would ask, and before that, I don't know if we've checked with some four or five cities in the state of Wisconsin that have utilities and looked at their profit and losses just for that utility. I didn't realize we're going to, looking at all three utilities, and that makes some sense. I don't know if we have the wherewithal from financially, management depth, time, and all those things that do, if it came out that somebody said, yeah, this is the buy of the century, okay? And it may be the buy of the century if a consultant recommends it, but it may not fit the city of Superior. So I'd like to spend some time looking at that. So I don't know if we listed some questions specifically that we wanted answered from them. Maybe we did, maybe we didn't, but, and the big thing that concerned me, this is a big deal, and not just the city of Superior, just in general, when you get into a big venture like this, I mean, they have over 50% failure rate, you know, and that's just the way it is. It's tough to make these things, not just this utility, but just general, somebody going to spend some money. They have a high failure rate, so that concerns me. And the other item is, I know we didn't, I don't know where the financing has come from, and somebody said, we'll tell you that when we get this done. I think that's a little, for my money, it's a little backwards, because why spend the money if we don't, if we, if it's going to cost us too much? But, so those are the things. I would just ask the courtesy to hold this in, from this body for one month, and if that's possible, I would appreciate it. Thank you. I'll make that motion.
Just a minute, Counselor. I'm going to consider you two have divided this, so I just need to note that for the minutes, that the question will have been divided on the request of Counselor Sweeney, and we will consider 7.2.1 separately. Now, you have made a motion to postpone this item. You said for one month. Do you mean for one full month, to the second meeting in September?
That is accurate.
Okay. The motion is to postpone to the second regular council meeting in September. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second, the motion is by Counselor Sweeney, the second by Counselor Anderson. Is there a discussion on the motion to postpone? Counselor Moff?
Not necessarily opposed to the idea of postponing, but I would say, like, normally we let our committees do the work. The Public Works Committee's been working on this for a long time, and this isn't the end of the process. In fact, you know, like, this is just the next step. The city council is not legally able to authorize the purchase of these utilities, and so this is one step along a long process. Ultimately, that decision would be for our citizens, and we can't give them the data. They need to make that decision without, without working with a consultant like this. I would say I could answer pretty much all of your questions this evening, although I'm not sure we want to sit here. I'm hoping that I might offer a motion to amend that you would be willing to discuss this at the next council meeting. I could answer your questions tonight if you want.
I'm sorry, well, you, did you make a motion to amend?
Motion to amend the postponement until the next council meeting.
Okay, so this, there's a motion to amend the motion changing the postponement to the first council meeting in September. That is your motion? Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Second is by Counselor Ladine. Right now, what we are considering is whether we, whether the motion will be to postpone to the next city council meeting or to postpone, so if, I want to make sure we understand it, a yes will not postpone it. It will only clarify that the question is whether to postpone it to the next meeting rather than the meeting after that. Does everybody understand the amendment in front of us? Is there a discussion on that amendment? Counselor Sweeney?
I'm not opposed to that, if we can get everything done, but, and the past history tells me that I'd rather go two weeks, two meetings, just to make sure we get everything done. If it were to be, if my questions were to be answered within, before the next meeting, I'm more than happy to. I have no reason to hold it up for the next meeting.
Okay, the question is whether to amend the motion to change the postponement date from the second meeting in September to the first meeting in September. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. In the opinion of the Chair, the motion carries. The motion is now to postpone until the next city council meeting, which will be the first city council meeting in September. Counselor Sweeney?
We have a roll call, please.
Yes.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to postpone? Okay, the motion is to postpone
this item to the next regular city council meeting. To do so, please say yes. To not postpone and to consider, to continue considering this tonight, say no. Will the clerk please call the roll? I'm sorry, does everybody understand the motion?
What's a yes and no?
Yes. Ends discussion on this tonight. We will pick it back up at exactly this place at the next council meeting.
On the second.
On September 2nd.
That's the, yes, yes. Okay, that is what a yes vote does. What a no vote does is we're just going back into discussion, and we will decide whether or not to approve this tonight, okay? We would entertain more motions at that point, too, but right now, this is the question of whether to postpone. Okay, I'm going to proceed by roll call.
Mr. Herrick?
Just a question. What was the first one we just voted on there? I thought we were just, I thought this is the one you're referring to now, and I thought we just voted on last time.
Yeah, all we were doing before is debating when we should postpone it to, okay? So Counselor Sweeney suggested postponing to the second meeting in September. Counselor Moffett suggested postponing to the first meeting in September. We took that roll call vote, and we decided we would consider postponing until the first meeting in September.
Okay.
Now I'm asking whether you want to postpone at all. If we do, if you say yes, it's postponed to the first meeting in September.
Okay, yeah, I'll, I say yes, but just let me add something to that, and hopefully we'll have the answer. I do have some questions that I reached out to Director Ryan Hart about. Of course, he's out of town until next week in regards to this, to this study, so. But for now, yeah, so I suppose if worst-case scenario, we could kick it down another two weeks after that, correct?
Yes, that would be an order.
Okay, all right, so yes.
Okay, technically, Mr. Herrick reopened discussion. Is there any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? The question is whether to postpone.
Mr. Herrick, was it yes, correct? Grasky?
Yes.
Ladine?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moffett?
Yes.
Sweeney?
Yes.
Fennessy?
Yes.
Elm?
Yes.
And Ludwig?
Yes.
There are nine in favor and none opposed. This is postponed until the next city council meeting. The, the question is now on the balance of the Public Works Committee recommendations. The remaining, one, two, three, six, the remaining six recommendations on the agenda. We already have a motion, a second for those. Any further discussion on any of those? Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just one comment on 7.2.4. I just wondered if there was another bid on that particular item. I realize it's in regards to the John Deere tractor, so.
Okay, Director Todd Janigo, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. What we did with that is, we got a machine that was comparable to the existing machine, and that's already gone through the bid process. That was available on the Wisconsin Vendor Net. So that's already gone through the state bid process. So we went with that model similar to other models we have and similar to the old one, but the state Vendor Net has already gone through that bidding process.
The, just because it's been a while since we've talked about that, let me make sure that I understand this. The state Vendor Net process, that process you just described, that is a list of companies that have already submitted bids to the state and therefore been approved, and therefore, rather than putting something out to bid straight away for a purchase, we can, our bid procedure authorizes us to select products that are already, that are on that list, correct? Or close enough?
Correct.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I understood the pickups, but I wasn't quite sure about this particular piece of machinery you saw. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on any of the remaining six items? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Next item is 7.3, the business of the Finance Committee with a special meeting held on August 12th. Is there a report from the Chair?
Yes, thank you. This was a special meeting.
Your mic, please, Counselor.
This was a special meeting for the Finance Committee, for the mental health clinic located in East End, to give them a grant of, actually, what we approved in the, this has to be changed a little bit, at least clarified, and Jim, maybe you can, we've agreed to, the city would give $25,000 if the Douglas County would give 25, and as it indicated here, they verbally, the county has verbally agreed to that, but I would like to make sure that, I don't know what the process is for the county, if the county board has to approve that or not, but it's, this language leaves it, in my opinion, in limbo. I'd like a clarification of that.
Yes, I can try and pull up, I had an email the next day. I'm going to summarize it now, because I won't get it in front of me right now, but I had an email next day for, backing up, the Chairman is right, the original grant proposal is for $50,000. What the Finance Committee actually recommended was 25, they recommended a grant award of $25,000, because Douglas County Health and Human Services offered to pay half the value of this grant, $25,000. So first, the recommendation is actually for $25,000, so when we come to a motion, I would recommend that you move the $25,000, not the 50. But I did get an email the next day that they have the grant, and they asked for the means by which they should remit the money to us. So if you want to give me a minute, I can pull that up, or you can just trust my assurances that they were looking to give us the money in writing.
If that question is directed to me, yes, I would certainly trust that then, and we will just, the clerk could read it once she changes that to 25, then for the city?
We would just make that part of the motion. In fact, as Chair, would you mind recommending approval of the grant award in the amount of $25,000?
I will make that change. I make a recommendation, we approve $25,000 for the grant.
The motion is by Counselor Sweeney, the second by Counselor Herrick, to award a grant of $25,000 to the Encouragement Clinic. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
All right, item 7.6 is the business of the Committee of the Whole with a meeting on August 5th. Is there a report from the Chair?
I thought everyone did a very nice job that night, so thank you for showing up. That's my report.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, moving on to 8.2 with his reports without recommendations. At this time, are there any further committee or committee reports to be made?
I actually have one. I am going to report on the business of the Plan Commission, which held their meeting tonight, just before this meeting, and I'm only going to report, I'll have a more detailed report at the next meeting when we formally bring our business, but you will see, at the end of our agenda, at the end of New Business, Counselor Ladine has recommended approval of small business grant for Shamrock Bar and Pizza. We can discuss more at the time, but I just wanted to give you the formal report of the Plan Commission, that they did recommend the approval of that grant in the amount you see listed under New Business. So I can explain more if you have questions at the time, but just wanted to get it on our reports. Are there any other reports of any committees or commissions? Counselor Sweeney?
I would like a report on 10.4, which is, I don't know if we're to that yet, but the City Attorney Perel's explanation of that 10-point.
We'll address that as that item comes up.
Very good, thank you.
Any further reports of committees or commissions or boards? Then we can move on to New Business.
New Business, item 10.1, I'm recommending approval of miscellaneous licenses pending department approvals.
Motion approved.
Motion is by Counselor Ladine, second by Counselor Herrick. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
10.2, I'm recommending conditional approval of a Class A beer and Class C liquor wine-only license application for WIC Store Incorporated located at 406 Bellknap Street for the current license period through June 30th, 2026, pending police, health, and fire department approval. I can say that the fire department approval was approved today, and I heard from this business that they're hoping to do the closing on the new ownership agreement before the end of the month.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is by Counselor Moffett, second by Counselor Sweeney. Discussion. Counselor Herrick?
Yeah, just, is this like a new type of convenience store, or this is a new store, correct?
It's not a new store. It's a current store that has most recently been called Joe's Quick Mart.
Okay.
And they are changing ownership.
You most likely remember it as a Holiday by Old Riley Drive.
Sure, sure. All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.3, I'm recommending conditional approval of an original cigarette, tobacco, and electronic vaping device retail license application for WIC Store Incorporated located at 406 Bellknap Street for the over-the-counter sales of cigarettes, tobacco products, and electronic vaping devices for the current license period through June 30th, 2026, pending police department approval.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion is by Counselor Fennessy, second by Counselor Herrick. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Item 10.4, City Attorney Perel recommends approval of a resolution to commit city to settlement with certain defendants in ongoing opioid litigation for the same, and for the same authority to execute similar participation agreements in the future.
The motion is by Counselor Elm, the second by Counselor Herrick. Mr. Perel, would you introduce the resolution briefly?
Sure. Some of you may recall that in 2019, we signed on as a plaintiff to get involved with the national opioid litigation that is, has been pending for years. From time to time, and by the way, that litigation names a host of corporate defendants who have been involved historically in the manufacture and distribution of medications or drugs that contain opioids, and from time to time, the plaintiff's group settles with a particular corporate defendant who wants to, in essence, throw in the towel and resolve their portion of the awards that are being pursued against the group of defendants. In this instance, the Purdue Pharma, I believe, is one of the defendants, is prepared to settle with the plaintiff's group, but the individual municipalities have to sign on for that in order for the various jurisdictions to, in essence, lock and load on that final settlement and that determination, and ultimately, hopefully, of course, the payment of the award, a small, small portion of which will trickle down to the city of Superior. city of Superior. So I'm asking you in this resolution to approve a, to give me the authority to approve the city of Superior's sign on with a, with a settlement with a particular corporate defendant named in this matter, but then also in the future, as, as, as the, as the plaintiffs' group arrives at settlement opportunities with various other defendants, I'm asking your blessing to sign the Superior on to those so that we can get in line in accord with the schedule and be paid our portion of the award.
Discussion request. Counsel Sweeney.
Do we know what that's, you indicated a small amount. Do we know what that amount is?
I never do know what the amount is until, because we never know if all the, if all the participating municipal plaintiffs are going to sign on.
It's my understanding, in the next two years, it'll be substantial, most of the companies will sign, will approve of that, and the money will become, I don't know if it goes to the state and then to us, is that how it works?
That's generally how it works, yes.
Okay, so within the next 2026 and '27, it should be done by, is that your understanding, too?
I can't forecast when the, when the final details of this litigation will be completed, but it should, it should linger for some years, and in the meantime, we continue to get, I won't say a steady diet of payments, but I did get notice from the National Opioid Organization a couple of weeks ago of three payments that are due to arrive to us soon, likely have actually already.
Right.
And those three payments tallied roughly $10,000, $11,000 total.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion on the resolution? Here, Counsel Moffett.
Yeah, I guess I'm okay with our resolution this evening. I just hope that we'll have the opportunity to discuss how the funding gets used and make sure that it doesn't just hit general fund, but can be used to help people either avoid potential opioid problems in the future, or help with some of the health consequences because of the opioid pan, like epidemic, and so I'm hoping that we can have a conversation around that funding as it arrives.
We have strict criteria under which we can withdraw and spend that money. We have to account for it. I know that we, we allowed those funds to accumulate for some time, probably hit, hit somewhere in the neighborhood of $60,000 or $70,000 in that one account. I believe we've started to draw down from that money through one or two purchases that have been recommended by either the fire or the police departments, but I'm not overly familiar with what that spend has been like. I do know that Director Reinhardt has to report the spending from those collected, from those awards, and they have to be consistent with the parameters that are, that we're allowed to spend them in, and those parameters are consistent with your concerns that you expressed just now.
Sorry, I just, I learned a little bit about this process, and I know that there are some predatory companies nationally that know that communities are receiving these funds, and so they're actively pitching, you know, solutions and things, and I think some of them are probably more helpful than others, and so I just hope that we're being very considerate about how we spend that funding as it comes in, and not just like, oh, this company sent us a flyer, it seems like an okay way to spend the money, you know?
But I would recommend, then, the, both the Public Safety Committee and the Finance Committee would be reasonable places to call for a report on the fund, the existing fund, how it has been spent, to look at what its specific restrictions are, and then what other options the council has beyond that. So if you wanted to put, say, further restrictions, like council approval before actually spending something, or if we can have a dedicated use, say, within the known authorized uses, we could prepare a council resolution to that effect. So I would just meet with the chairs of those committees and ask that that be placed on agenda, and I think the attorney, police, fire chief, and finance director would all probably give a pretty intelligent report on how that's worked so far. Other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries.
And item ten point five, Counsel LeDeen recommends approval of a small business grant for Shamrock Bar and Pizza doing business at 5825 Tower Avenue for expenses including the removal of old windows, blocking off and adding shingles, along with other facade improvements in the amount of $9,936.
Motion approved.
The motion is by Counsel LeDeen, second by Counsel Herrick. As I said, counselors, the Plan Commission discussed this tonight and did recommend it. You have not seen her minutes or anything yet, obviously, it was an hour ago, but we had a debate on this at two different meetings, and the main subject of the debate was on the fate of the windows in front of the second story of Shamrock. This project with these grant funds would cover those windows up. We learned tonight it would not remove those windows structurally, it would just cover them, and we had, there had been some discussion among members, and I don't, we have at least one member, the minority here, that can describe it better than me, but there was some concern about, does that change the look of that building and therefore that neighborhood and business district? That is what, that was the subject of our discussion tonight. Ultimately, on a voice vote, the Plan Commission recommended approval of this tonight. So I'll answer all questions I can, but we also have Plan Commission members here as well. So questions or discussion? Counsel LeDeen.
Just, just if I may here, counselors, this was a little unorthodox. I do apologize on that. I apologize to the Plan Commission. I did not want to step on their toes necessarily on this. Just a little background on it. Shamrock had submitted this application to the Planning Department in late May of this year. It was put on the June 23rd Planning, Plan Commission meeting. There was some discussion, as Mayor Payne talked with you about as far as the facade and the windows in front. The committee decided to take no action on that. It stayed in committee through the July agenda. There were some meetings with the Planning Department and Shamrock to try and see what it would take, maybe to keep the windows or change the plan of, of the grant applicants around. And then the first August meeting was canceled, and this was held over for a special meeting today. The reason I put it on the agenda is the original timeline for this project is coming up very fast, it's coming, it is in September. J R Jensen, who will be doing the work, is wanting an answer, was wanting an answer of the owners, and in order to get this moving and not hold it for another two weeks while we waited, I put it on the agenda, hoping Plan Commission would also approve it. It was approved by the Plan Commission, and I am hoping to get it approved here tonight so that award can go out to Shamrock, it can go to J R Jensen, and they can stay on schedule with their project.
Further questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
In the opinion of the chair, the motion carries. Counselors, we have no further business, but I just want to point this out because that happened twice tonight, and then at Plan Commission, where we had a voice vote that had division, and this is just a quick parliamentary notice. It's my duty to report the vote as it happened, and I can't change the vote just because I disagree with it, even if it's a quiet voice vote. If you ever feel that I've gotten that wrong, I will usually try to pause, especially where it's indecisive, if you get a couple of no votes on something, I'll say, in the opinion of the chair, the motion carries, and then I'll wait a beat to see if anybody wants. All you have to say is division. If you think I'm wrong, or if you just think we should take this vote, call division, and we'll take a roll call. That's, that's how that typically works. So don't ever sit there squirming, or if you want to make sure a vote is recorded, always call for a roll call. That's all I have. We have no further, we have no public comment and no further business. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to invite the counselors to our meet and greet for Superior Sister City on Monday. That should be about 3:30 Monday afternoon, right across the hall.
2:70.
2:70, thank you.
The city of Ami posted a picture of the delegation with the mayor, and they are pretty excited. They're, they should be on their way pretty soon. Any further business for the council? Hearing none, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.